Good afternoon, everyone. What a beautiful, beautiful turnout. Thank you so much for joining us for our Garden of Light event. I am Kenya Gomez, Media Relations Director, and it is an honor to be here. I know this is a very emotional, special day for all of you. We have over 30 families here, so thank you so much for being here. Today, we gather to honor National Crime Victims Rights Week. Today, we support and stand with those that have been victims of crimes, but also unite in solidarity with those that have lost a loved one due to a crime. This will be a beautiful event, and you will see why we call it a Garden of Light. We will be planting trees back here in memory of those that are no longer with us. Now, please rise for an invocation by Pastor Peter Limones from the Sherri Land Baptism Temple.
Good evening. Let us pray. Lord God, we come to you this evening giving you thanks for allowing us to be able to wake up this morning, giving you thanks where we can gather, Lord God, with the freedom to just come together and lift up your word, to be able to come together in remembrance of those who have fallen. But, Lord God, we also know that you are the God of peace and you are the God of healing. So, we ask that even today, we know that there is not a statement that we can make that can make all of these loved ones forget, nor can we come up with a fancy slogan on how to tell someone to calm down anymore. But what we can say is that, Lord God, we ask you to continue to watch over us and bless this time right now as multiple cities come together, Lord God, to give you thanks, to ask for your continued protection. And, Lord God, as we stand here together, not only in remembrance, but also in respect for those who have lost. We give you thanks for the families that are here represented. We give you thanks and we ask you to continue to bless them and keep them. And so, we go to your word, Lord God, as we close out out of Psalm 57 where it says, "Be gracious to me, God; be gracious to me, for I take refuge in you. I will seek refuge in the shadow of your wings until danger passes. I call to God most high, to God who fulfills his purposes for me. He reaches down from heaven and saves me, challenging the one who tramples me." So, Lord God, we lift this Psalm of security, asking you to continue to protect us. And as we continue on in this evening, let it be known that every word that comes out of our mouths, Lord God, be used to not only uplift, but to also share in love to those who have lost a loved one. We give you thanks for all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Now, we truly appreciate the work that our police department does to help crime victims. They go above and beyond to provide supportive resources to those that have been affected by a crime. Please help me welcome our awesome police chief, Cesar Torres.
Good evening. I'm Chief Torres for the Mission Police Department, and on behalf of our mayor, council, and city manager, welcome to this special event. I would like to thank every...
Mayor and council, we have... We have one more, it's just for the proposed BYOB ordinance. As of recent, we realized we need the... The city needs an ordinance to regulate these types of entities, and so Suzie's going to present on that.
And this is just... We just checked with the other municipalities. So far, City of McAllen is the only one that has this type of ordinance. So, one would be first to establish a definition for it and to amend a city zoning ordinance to permit a conditional use permit for BYOBs only in general business and industrial districts. Of course, establish a BYOB definition of bring your own bottle, beer, beverage, or booze. Establish a criteria for the CUP. And we've listed the applicant must reside within... McAllen has 100 miles within their own city. We didn't put a miles depending on what the council's direction is. The applicant must not have a conviction of a felony. Each owner of the BYOB must submit name and information for a background check. If the applicant is not the tenant, they might submit an authorized letter from the property owner or landlord consenting the application. BYOB must not exceed three calls for service within 90 days involving weapons, violent crimes, mayor disturbance, deadly conduct, felony offense, or human trafficking offense. They may not allow members on premise, including parking lots between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 10 a.m. To establish BYOB eligibility criteria for the CUP, they must present all their corporate information. Permit holder shall be on the BYOB premises during all hours of operation. BYOB shall close between 2 a.m. and 10 a.m. daily and not allow persons to consume alcohol between 2:15 a.m. and 10 a.m. Proper signage for exits and where alcohol consumption may be permitted. No pollution such as noise or otherwise may travel beyond the immediate property line. Planning and zoning commission may impose additional requirements, including but not limited to increase open space, loading and parking, landscaping, and additional improvements like curbing and sidewalks, and any additional requirements suggested from the city council. If the council is receptive to adopting an ordinance, it will be presented to the planning and zoning on May... I'm sorry, August the 23rd, and council will see it on the 28th. Unless they have any changes or any concerns.
I have a question. On the number three, the second bullet says, "Permit holder shall be on the BYOB premises during all hours of operation." That's a tough request, don't you think?
Yes.
It's like the permit owner has to be there present at all times.
McAllen's ordinance does. This is just a summary, but McAllen's ordinance does allow applicant or their...
Representative?
I think registered agent.
Registered agent, okay. We need to add something like that because it'd be tough to have that one person be there every time.
Well, we want to make sure the owner is aware or those ones that are aware of any accountability.
Okay, so that would be the only thing that I would change is permit holder or registered...
Or representative.
Representative, yeah.
Sounds good. I guess I just have a question from a legal question. At TABC, there's no issues. We can regulate BYOB?
We can't. TABC won't. And the reason why we mirror the 2:15 is because if TABC were to regulate it, I believe they have like a 15-minute period after they close to like finish their drinks. So, that's why we added 2:15.
That's why you're ordered 2:30.
And we go to 2:30 to leave the premises completely.
Okay, so that would be my only suggestion. I guess we can move forward with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next item is if we have any questions in reference to the regular meeting, but since we're probably a little late unless there's a pressing question. No? Okay, just...
No questions?
No? Okay. That concludes the workshop. It is 4:38, and we'll just be a minute before we start the next meeting. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Okay, it's 4:43, and we're going to start with our regular meeting. And today's date is Monday, August the 14th, and again, it's 4:43. Ms. Anna, can you establish quorum?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garza.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega. Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilman Aviel Flores.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay, thank you. So, the next item is the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Yes, if I can have everyone, please stand.
Heavenly Father, as a new school year begins, we pray that you care for, guide, and protect our students and teachers. Send your Spirit upon them and fill them with your wisdom and blessings. May they have a successful school year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you. The next item is the disclosure of any conflicts of interest. Ms. Anna, was anything filed?
No, ma'am. Nothing was filed.
Okay, thank you. Next item, we'll go on to presentations. And the first item is the June 2023 Employee of the Month.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the Employee of the Month for June, Maribel Resendes.
Maribel, if you could, please.
So, Maribel is very observant and places a high priority on safety. Recently, there was a situation where a suspicious individual was doing something in the backside of the Mission Events. There was no advance notice of anyone going in to do maintenance work, and she was concerned that maybe there was a bad intention from this individual. She asked a staff member to ask who the individual was and what was the nature of business near the building. The gentleman said he worked for a gas line company and was testing the lines in the area. Apparently, he had connected a small device to the building. On that day, we had a law enforcement officials in the building, and this didn't sit well with Maribel, so she asked a couple of officers to please go and investigate the individual and the small device connected to the building. Officers responded immediately and concluded that the individual had checked out. Maribel's concerns was everyone's safety. Although this may sound trivial, we must recognize that there are people that could possibly want to hurt others. It is important that our employees be vigilant and trained to address potential threatened situations immediately. Congratulations, Maribel.
Thank you. Congratulations.
She does have her husband here and the events center staff as well.
Okay. Next item is the Community Development Award. Ms. Joanne?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I do have a presentation this afternoon. I do have my staff and a couple of the members from the committee. And let me go ahead and just explain what we are receiving here. The City of Mission Community Development Department is a longtime member of the National Community Development Association, which was founded by John A. Sasso. Mr. Sasso was a leading national force in creating the CDBG program and fought for continued funding to this program in CDA and its members. He cared deeply about low-income people and neighborhoods served by CDBG. He established the National Community Development Week Award in 2000 to recognize outstanding member efforts to celebrate National Community Development Week. This year, we were selected for this award for a city with population 50,000 to 100,000 and recognized during the National Community Development Annual Council Conference in Orlando, Florida. The Community Development Department has continually participated in CDBG Week activities, which start with the reading of the proclamation and approval of the proclamation for the CDBG Week during the month of April and showcase projects to bring awareness to the community. The department was also recognized by the City Manager's Office and the Human Resources Department. The Media Department conducted interviews with beneficiaries, committee members, and several funded agencies to discuss the importance of CDBG. Our consultant also held an art contest in which several agencies participated. The winners were children's drawings from Buckner Children and Family Services and the Housing Authority of Arau County. CDBG's celebration ended with the coordination of the Spring Rally Event, which was held on April 15, 2023, at the Mission Food Park from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We collaborated with city departments, CDBG-funded agencies, local vendors and entertainers, and 5x5 Brewery to provide a family-oriented event to bring awareness to the community. This event recognized not only CDBG Week, but also highlighted Fair Housing Month, Prevention of Animal Coating Month, Library Week, Earth Day, Arbor Day, and Children's Day. City departments and agencies provided program information, children's activities, bike raffle, tree planting event, Rescue a Dog Day, and market days that day. I would like to thank you, the mayor, council members, and city manager for your support, and city departments, agencies, vendors, and my staff who assisted in making this a successful event.
Thank you very much. Any suggestions? We set it off. And this is the...
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We'll go down there. Try it easier. Thank you. The next item is a report from our chamber. Ms. Indrikis?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I love the Barbie outfit. Looks good. So, we're really excited for Wednesday's Buenos Aires luncheon and that we're doing a new take. The focus is on state of education. We're really excited. We're sold out, and it's happening this Wednesday on August 16th. And we will be having President Bailey, President Solis, and Assistant Provost from A&amp;M on the panel. So, good discussion coming up. Earlier that morning at 10 a.m., we do have an educational seminar with our partners at SBDC with the university, and it's on maximizing sales. Next Wednesday, we also have another educational development session, and it is on how different generations use social media. And then, on Thursday, we have another educational on the art of marketing. We are open right now, so ballot season is still going on. Our ballots have been mailed out to all of our chamber members. So, the deadline to submit the ballot is going to be August 31st. So, if we don't get any... Depending on how many ballots we get, you know, in person, those that didn't submit one, we will email an electronic ballot just to those members that haven't... We haven't heard back from, so we can have a good tally. And a kind reminder, annual awards nominations is open. Today was a deadline. Unfortunately, we haven't had any nominations submitted. So, we will be extending the deadline for annual awards, and we're also going to ask the board to help us identify some nominations for our upcoming annual awards gala. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mayor, Brenda, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And what are the categories of the awards?
Yes. So, we have Business Leader of the Year, Business of the Year, and Community Impact Award for a nonprofit.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the departmental reports that were in our packet.
I'm going to approve the reports as presented.
Second. Okay, there's a motion in the second to approve or accept the departmental reports as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. The next item is citizens' participation. Ms. Anna, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, ma'am. I have several. I have not seen them here. I don't know if Leo Longoria is here. Next, we have Christina Ramirez. Christina Ramirez. Elizabeth Perez.
If you would please state your name and address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Perez. People call me Betty. 1020 Pamela Drive here in Mission. Good afternoon, Mayor Gonzalez, council members. I own the house I grew up in at 1020, where I'm in the process of converting the yard to native plants. For some background on myself, I am the founder of Planta Nativa Quinta Masatlan, which was a yearly festival held to educate people about growing natives. We brought in speakers such as Doug Tallamy, author of Bringing Nature Home. He's mentioned in this article I passed out, or that, Anna, or somebody passed out. We brought in another speaker. Her name was Pam Pennick. She's from San Antonio. She's a blogger. She wrote Lawn Gone and The Water Saving Garden. Last year, my lawn in Mission was most popular in an informal native garden contest hosted by Quinta Masatlan. I am on the board and past president of the Friends of the Wildlife Corridor, which is dedicated to preserving, protecting, and enhancing wildlife corridors that encompass the Santa Ana and Lower Rio Grande Valley National Wildlife Refugees. My parents, Mari Antonia Tony and Francisco Pancho Perez, had the house on Pamela built in 1956 when I was four years old. It was one of the first in the neighborhood. It's across the street from the Mission ISD building. My father and mother transplanted several native ebony trees and mesquite trees, still alive today, into their two-lot lawn. They brought them from the ranch that my grandparents, Martin Diego, M.D., and Eduvijas Cavazos, had started buying in the '30s. M.D. and Vique, by the way, had moved to Mission in 1911, so they were some of the earliest citizens of this town. Just before my mother died, my father died in 1996. I moved to the ranch from Austin, where I had been living for 20 years after getting a BA at UT. I specialized in botany, and it's there that I learned how to garden and started to learn about native plants. After my father died, my mother continued to live at 1020, and she died two years ago at home at the age of 102. She left the family house to my sister... And I thought I had complied with the regulations of the city. It was a big blow to me when the city had mowers come in and mowed down a lot of what I had been planting for the year. I felt violated, trespassed upon, and humiliated, and my first thought was that I needed to sell the house and leave Mission. But I see now that what happened was a misunderstanding on my part, and after being angry and sleepless for days, I decided to begin again and create a native yard that would comply with city rules and that the neighbors wouldn't complain about. I want to change the way think, people think about lawns, so that they can also be urban corridors for wildlife, and that's what this article is about. I hope you'll read it. Natives require little water after they are established. They attract native birds and insects that have evolved with them and provide food and habitat for them. No mow, no blow native yards can be no noisy gas-powered machines spewing more carbon into there. We should promote instead the use of electric mowers and blowers, or better yet, weeding and sweeping. Native shade trees cooled our, cooled our lawns and the whole city down. Spending more time outside is helpful and centering. Hand watering is soothing after a long day at the office, especially now with earth temperatures rising. We should be concerned not about keeping our lawns green and mowed, filled with very few species other than non-native grasses like Saint Augustine's and exotic trees like oleanders, oaks, and crape myrtles, but with trees that promote wildlife. I hope to work with the zoning department and code enforcement to incorporate native plant lawns into our zoning laws. I am not an anomaly, but one of many of our citizens that care and have the same concerns about the way we manage our outside space.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor, the next two, I don't know if it's on an item on the agenda, because it says apartments on the side.
Okay.
José Soto.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es José Soto. Tengo setenta y nueve años. Vivo en la casa de Jauzil, donde vive puro gente de la tercera edad. Esta es la segunda vez que vengo a pedir que nos ayude en el encuentro del director de Jauzil, porque no quiere limpiar afuera donde vienen los apartamentos. Parece un basurero, y esto tiene más de un año. El mes pasado le traje unas fotografías que traigo aquí, que quisiera que usted las diera, para que vean que nos metieran lo que estoy diciendo. Se la traje aquí al oficial cine manager, y se la entregué a la secretaria. Le dije de qué se trataba, y todavía ahorita estoy esperando que siquiera me hagan una llamada. ¿Puedo entregarle las fotos?
Sí, me los puede, me los puede dar. Okay. ¿Quiere que se los dé el city manager?
Sí, que nadie se quede. Y ese lugar está así hace más de un año, y está solamente aquí, a dos cuadras de aquí. Es una vergüenza tener, estar viviendo ahí, y que nadie se dé cuenta, y te quejas aquí, te quejas allá, y nadie hace nada. ¿Por qué?
Okay.
Ojalá que, que puedan hacer algo por nosotros, si no, voy a tener que mandarlas a la tribuna de juicio. No hay otra manera. Gracias por escucharme.
Okay. Okay. Homer Salinas.
Noi. Can I see the picture? What he's talking about? Is it Rob Messi? No.
This also says apartments.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm here basically complaining because of all the apartments that are being built in our area. I live at four fourteen North Francisco, and since they started building apartments, we've had trouble with crime. I've had my house broken into. There's strange cars, people that are parking in the alley at all times of the day, morning. At any point in time, they have rental property rent next to us, and there's anywhere from seven, eight cars parked there. I've had the police go to there to knock on the door. Nobody ever comes to the door. There's surveillance cameras all around that house. Now, there's definitely something going on there. They're trafficking, something. People, I don't know what it is. And then you all want to build more apartments there on Lot Twelve, Block Eighty-One, original town site, and we don't need any more apartments. All it has brought is crime to that area. My property, we've been there for more than a hundred years. In my family, that property. And since they started building those apartments, all that is trouble. They throw trash, they don't take care of the property. It's just been a mess totally. And like I said, I've had the police go about three, four times to knock on the door. Nobody ever comes to the door. Why? If a policeman comes to the door, I'm going to answer the door to find out what's going on, and they don't. And there's, like I said, six, seven, eight cars at one time that are parked. And there's people that live, leave there at three in the morning or whatever with their truck peeling out, going out of nowhere, and it's just trouble. So, please, no more apartments. We're the last property there that's residential, and we're surrounded by apartments all over. So, that's my complaint.
With all due respect, do you permit my concern? We vote no. No more apartments, please. We are senior citizens with pioneer submission, and we deserve some respect. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Esmeralda Adame.
Hi, my name's Esmeralda Adame. I would just bring in a thank you to the mayor and we, for your participation and your support during our Persistence and Adversity Foundation Leadership Workshop that we had this, this year. We had over two hundred students that participated, and it was a great event. We had authors in there, motivational speakers, and it's something that we're planning again for next year, and it's something that we need. Hopefully, we get more support. And again, it's something that we need to prepare our future leaders for this event. I know in this event that we had again, we had great participation. We had Mr. Francisco Choa, which is the founder and of La Co Palenque and the Palenque Group. We also had Lone Star National Bank. We had motivational speakers. We had a lot of people that are supporting this initiative for our foundation, and this foundation was established in two thousand twenty, and hopefully, we'll start building more of this community involvement and helping our future leaders, prepare them in equipment for the future, because one day, all of us are not going to be here, and it's them that are going to have to be here. So, we need to teach them not just the skills, but the soft skills to literally move forward and move not just our city, but the valley and out forward. So, and I just wanted to give you this thank you certificate and this thank you box for you, Mayor, and a box, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll leave you. Y'all want to come up here and take a quick picture? Is Brenda still here? I'll take these here.
Alex.
Someone's cell phone.
Alex.
Someone's cell phone.
Alex.
Someone's cell phone.
Thank you.
Y'all, y'all.
Yeah, Jonas.
Where are you going?
Jonas. Thank you.
Do you need a picture?
Happy to.
Thank you.
This is the...
Okay. Ms. Anna?
That concludes citizens' vote.
Okay. Okay, so that concludes our presentations. At this point, I would like to move to executive session, requesting that we do go into executive session to discuss the legal update on the city of Mission and the Warehouse Event Center D. B. A. Blackout Social Club under, under five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. So, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Mayor, I was wondering if we could add another, I was going to request number thirty-three to go into executive session. I'm wondering if we could already take it in and discuss everything.
That's fine. Under the same code, zero-seven-one.
Under the same code, yes. Okay. That would be fine.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, there's a motion in the second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. We'll be back.[1140.41]
Thank you all. Yeah, Jonas. Please. Jonas, Jonas.
Okay, that concludes Citizens First. Okay. Okay, so that concludes our presentations. At this point, I would like to move to executive session, requesting that we do go into executive session to discuss the legal update on the City of Mission and the Warehouse Event Center DBA Blackout Social Club under 551.071. So is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Mayor, I was wondering if we could add another... I was gonna request number 33 to go into executive session. I'm wondering if we could already take it in and discuss everything.
That's fine. Under the same code, 071. That's fine.
Okay, that would be fine.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, the second, to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. We'll be back.
Déjame verte.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to go back into?
I want to reconvene.
Second.
There's a motion and second to reconvene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So the next item is a public hearing, and the first item on the public hearing is our preliminary budget. Mr. Perez?
Yes, ma'am. This is the item that we open it up if there's any comments or just to open.
Okay, so are there any, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the preliminary budget? As, and it is posted?
Or any questions, yes.
Or any questions on the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four? Any comments, any questions? Anyone here that wants to speak in favor or in opposition or question to preliminary budget? Is there anyone online?
No.
No? Okay. There being no questions or concerns, is there a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
I want some more.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on the preliminary budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. The next item is the rezoning request for Lot twelve, Block eighty-one.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number seven is a rezoning for all of Lot twelve, Block eighty-one, Mission Regional Townsite. This is from R one, single-family residential to R two duplex, fourplex. The applicant is Dagoberto Perez. The council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of East Feast Street and North Francisco. Surrounding zones include residential to all directions. Existing land uses include vacant to the north, south, and the site. Single-family residential to the west and to the east there some apartments. This property has been considered before for an R two zone in October of twenty nineteen and January of twenty twenty-two, and both times it has been denied. The future land use map reflects this area's low-density residential, reflecting that the R one remained the best compatible use for the neighborhood. Rezoning the site to R two would go against the mass rezoning that was done by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for the Old Town Site area in twenty, in two thousand and six. Staff has received several calls from residents within the area opposing this rezoning. The concerns voiced are that they don't want any more apartments in the area, tenants don't keep up the maintenance of apartments, and they disrupt their peace. PNC and staff recommended denial. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item?
Okay, again, as I spoke earlier.
Please state your name and address, sir, just for the record.
Okay, it's just like, please, no more because we were having a lot of trouble. And if you were in my shoes, it would be a nightmare. So please, we don't need any more apartments. It's just bringing more crime to the area. And, you know, just dirtying up the place. They trash up the place, there's people coming in and out, strange cars parking in front of my, in the, in the alley in front of my house that I don't know, full of people that I don't know what they're doing there. And then they drive to the back alley and consult with the people that live there. So please, don't allow it. Thank you.
We both know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, and Public. Maria Sepena Salinas, and I am against it. There was a situation that occurred in Miller Street. It was a drive-by and some guys came out with weapons. And then before we knew it, the whole neighborhood up to that area was full of border patrol, police, helicopters, and my God, out of the apartments that my cousins are talking about, salieron. It's crazy. Not only the apartments are bad, it needs to be like my cousins are saying, they're pioneers. They need to have stability residential, no more apartments, and so much trash in that area. And we're an all-American city. It would be appreciated if you all would, whoever has all those apartments there and has such a mess, either they start cleaning up the mess or the city starts fining them. We don't need any more apartments. We need nice, moderate homes. Denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please state your name and address.
Dagoberto Perez, two nineteen North Missouri Street. I purchased this property only because it was already situated in the center of apartment complexes. We didn't want to change anything, given our understanding was that it was, it was owned for a multifamily, given that it's already situated in the middle of several apartments. Our mentality was to be able to build a three-plex, four-plex piece of apartment. Something with a more modern, upscale vision. We understand the concerns. But as, when we put the, the request to rezone it, we had already walked in with a beautification plan or effort to try to beautify that, that area. If granted the permission, we would work in conjunction with you guys to beautify and keep the area safe. We don't want to worsen the area, but better beautify it in, in, in the contrary. Like I said, if granted the opportunity, we would work with you guys and listen to the, the federal citizens' concerns and we would help with correcting some of the issues out there. We didn't buy the piece of property to make it any worse, but to beautify the, the property. I am owner of both properties, this property and the one just adjacent to, to the property. And again, the only reason we bought it was because it's already situated in the middle of an apartment complex. There's each piece of property adjacent to both of these properties is a multifamily already. So we're not trying to rezone something that is not already in, in effect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? No.
I want to close the public hearing, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close a public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Is there any, are there any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to deny the request to, from R one to R two. All in favor to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Okay, next item.
Item number eight is a conditional use permit for a guest house on property zone R one A, Lark Lot, single-family. This is at twenty-five oh-six Tulip. This would be out of Lot seventeen, Allegado subdivision. The applicant is Romane Esquera. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately a thousand fifty-five, the east of Stewart Road along the east side of Tulip Avenue. The owner is requesting a conditional use permit for the construction of a guest home. The structure is proposed to have four hundred and sixty square feet of living area. It will consist of one bedroom, one bathroom, a living room, and a port, covered porch. The irregular lot measures a total of eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet. Guest homes are allowed under R one A zone as long as they apply for a conditional use permit and meet the following conditions. The lot be a minimum of twelve thousand square feet. It cannot be made available or used for leased or rent. Proposed, proposal must be clearly secondary to the primary residence. It shall have, shall not have access to a public street and shall not have a separate kitchen or area or utilities. This conditional use permit request seems to be consistent with other similar requests approved by this board. Staff note that Lot seventeen is an irregular lot and measures only eleven thousand eight hundred square feet, just a hundred and thirty feet short of the twelve thousand requirement. Therefore, if approved, a variance would be needed. All setbacks will be complied with. Since no kitchen is included, staff is recommending approval subject to compliance with Section one fifty-six dash four of the zoning code, except for the minimum lot size requirement. The unit may not have a separate utility and electrical connections, transferability to other future owners imposing same conditions as to this applicant, not to be used for rental purposes and waiving the minimum lot size. PNC and staff recommended approval. This item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use for the guest house at twenty-five oh-six Tulip Avenue? Okay, is there anyone online? No?
I want to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close a public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, I want to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the guest house at twenty-five oh-six Tulip Avenue.
I, I just have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize. So the, the requirement is twelve thousand square feet, and you said this one is short by how much?
A hundred and thirty feet.
And do we have anything in the area that, or do we have anything anywhere, any guest house that has been approved on a lot less than twelve thousand?
Yes, we have two. Actually, this is a lot less than what we've approved in the past.
So there's some?
There's some. Very few, I would say, less than five, but there, there have been approved.
And do we have anything in place that, I mean, because we set the line somewhere for a reason, and, and so we're deviating from that line. I mean, what's, how far do we deviate? Is there anything that, that can guide us?
Specific limit, no. Nothing has been established as what is the minimum that we can request a variance for.
Councilmember Flores, I believe, also the, one of the comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission was that we look at the physical features of the lot, and this is a irregular shaped lot. It's kind of like a triangle lot, and so it doesn't fit the typical measurements of, of, of the development on there.
So then that would be the basis for the variance. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So we're in the middle of voting, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number, what on it?
Fifty-three, fifty-four.
Fifty-three, fifty-four. Okay, next item.
The next item is a preliminary and final replat approval of amended Platte New Quest Gateway subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of eleven point three seventy-nine acres, being all of Lot one, Mission Kmart, and out of Lot seventeen dash eleven, West Edition to Sheraland. This currently is own C three general business. The developer is AS one thirty-five Highway eighty-three and Bryan Road LP. The replat of the new quest is located on the northwest corner of Expressway eighty-three and Bryan Road. The developer is proposing to relocate the internal lot lines. The utilities are all in place. All they're doing is relocating the lot lines. PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the replat? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the replating of eleven point three seven nine acres, Lot one, Mission Kmart, West Edition to Sheraland? There's nobody in the audience. Is there anyone online? No?
I want to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close a public hearing on this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, I want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve preliminary and final replat for the New Quest Gateway subdivision. As presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Okay, next item.
Item number ten is a discussion and action to consider whether or not to revoke the conditional use permit for a social club slash nightclub, blackout private social club, located at fifteen twelve East Express eighty-three, Suite one oh-nine. This is being out of Lot one oh-nine, replat of Blocks three and four, Stewart Plaza subdivision. It's currently zone C three general business, and the applicant is Yaiu Pu. On April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, the city council held public hearings where in the conditional use right for a social club slash social club was, would be allowed or not. It was conditionally approved based on the information provided, the testimony given at the hearings, and as predominantly shown on ordinance fifty-three oh-four. Since that time, staff, management, and the police department has received several complaints of the of the business being operating past 2:00 a.m. We have called this to the attention of Mr. Yair via mail and in person and evidently the violation still continued. Staff have consulted with management and our city attorney on this item since it isn't planning's objective to shut down businesses, but to follow city ordinances approved by the council. With that in mind, it is hoped that Mr. Yair will provide whatever measures are required to comply. Staff did get a report for all the calls from the Mission PD. In May, we have received 15 calls in June 11 and in August 1. The concerns of those calls are in regards to loud noise, public intoxication, bites, suspicious circumstance, theft, assault. The applicant did submit earlier this day a petition in favor of the request to allow him from the residence or from the property owner from the plaza and the plaza behind, which is on your screen. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Please step up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Yair Cruz. I'd like to keep my address anonymous since we have some threats from someone. My name is Yair Cruz. I am the owner for Blackout Private Social Club. The reason that I'm here is to see if you guys have any questions in regards to what we do there and also to prove that we're not just a private social club with what it's saying on someone that is being persistent and putting complaints, which is the only person that has been putting complaints. And there has been police reports made against this person, which his name is George Bleson. And he actually said in context and a text that he has members from the city of Mission that he can manipulate. And I presented these items from, with the police department. And also, there has been some police reports that we did in regards to him being going to the business since he has a nightclub that has a conditional use permit. And somehow, he has been very, very, I would say, annoying to us and since other business that we had before. What we do at Blackout, we also help out the community. There we helped out people that passed away. Recently, we had a member that she passed away in Mexico, Monterrey. And we did an event for her to be able to pay for the funeral expenses and to bring her back to the U.S. As well, we do help with some people that they need help with. Last time that we had the weather issues, we helped them out with their houses around us. Also, some people that needed help with surgeries and stuff like that. We do some type of help for them, monetary, for them to be able to have their surgery. As far as with the complaints, I believe on the complaints, it has been only that one person that has gone and called PD and it's been on record on the court where it was only him calling the PD. Regarding the complaints about noise, we don't have anybody around us that is more and less than 500 feet that can complain about our noise because we don't have any noise. The decibels that we have, apparently the ordinance is 65 decibels, which it doesn't reach to that point more than 100 feet from our location. The person that I was talking about, which he owns Taboo, Baran Grill, he does have a conditional use permit and he was on the agenda before. And he has 20 notices of property.
Mr. Cruz, your time is up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you might want to look into that one. The item is on the conditional use permit for Taboo. He has more than 20 calls, use of weapons.
Mr. Cruz, your time is up.
Your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, I respect the Spanish English, but I can do it in Spanish, right?
Yes.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mariana Rodriguez.
And the direction?
Eighteen sixteen Travis and Michigan. Este, y bueno, se vino a hablar en favor de el club privado de Blackout porque yo tuve hace poco una cirugía y ellos me ayudaron a completar la cirugía que tuve muchos problemas con mi estómago, se me movió de lugar y muchas otras cosas. Toda hernia muy grande y todo. Y ellos me ayudaron y en realidad este, no se oye, no vivo muy lejos de ahí y no se oye el ruido. Como les digo, es un club privado que no nada más se dedican a hacer fiestas también, al menos en lo personal. Este, me ayudaron bastante con la cirugía que eso ya lo necesitaba.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Is there anyone online?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay, there's a motion. And a second?
Yes.
And a second to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I believe I believe Mr. Munoz is online.
Okay.
I don't know if you wanted to comment on anything.
Mr. Munoz, are you online?
Okay, you can move on.
Okay. So there's a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor say, and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero.
Mayor, if I can add something?
Yes.
So one of the things that wasn't really expanded upon was as recently, as Ms. De Luna mentioned, there were various police reports that were submitted in response to this location. But more significantly, on August 6th, at around 4:30, our police department was called out to this location. There was a public safety concern at that place. The suspect was charged with public intoxication, assault of a public servant, and potentially taking of a weapon from an officer. It's for those reasons that Planning and Legal Department presented this to, decided to present this to council for its consideration, considering the public safety concerns.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments?
I guess, I'm sorry. Just with regards to the public safety issues, a lot of these public safety issues were occurring after the time that we had permitted in the CUP. Is that correct, Ms. Uzi?
That is correct.
So the business continued to operate past 2:00 a.m.? And it was during those times that these incidents?
Based on the police report, it was, most of them did pass 2:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, after all of the concerns and incident that we just had, I mean, I'm very concerned about the safety of the citizens of Mission. So I would vote to revoke the CUP.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to revoke the CUP for Blackout Private Social Club at 1512 East Expressway 83, Suite 109. All in favor to revoke the conditional use permit, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay. And I believe that's the end of our public hearing. Okay, so we will move on to a consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled and discussed individually?
Mayor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented along with item number 15, approval of resolution number 1847. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero? Okay.
Four zero.
Four zero, I'm sorry, four zero. Okay. All right. Next item is a final plat approval for Eduardo subdivision number 20.
Item number 22 is a final plat approval for Eduardo subdivision number 20. This is a 19.67 acre tract of land out of lots 47-4 and 48-4, West Edition to Sherland. This is in our rule ETJ. The developer is Saguira Real Estate Holdings. The engineer is Saguira Engineering Group LLC. This is located at the west side of Trosper Road, approximately half a mile north of Mile 6. The developer is proposing 79 single-family residential lots. Water belongs to Sherland Water Supply. Sewer service will be addressed via an internal 8-inch sewer line system as it ties into an existing 8-inch central sewer line located south of this development. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy, and meeting any comments from the county planning office. This item is now before you.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Eduardo subdivision number 20. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Next item.
Item number 23 is a final plat approval for Malus 2 subdivision. This is all of Lot 17, Block Blue Texan Garden subdivision. This is in our suburban ETJ. The developer is Julio Zebra. The engineer is South Texas Infrastructure Group. This is located at the intersection of Mile 4 and Iowa Road. The developer is proposing 21 single-family residential lots. Water belongs to Agua Sed. For sewer, they will be using septic tanks. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff and PNC recommended approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules and meeting any comments from the county planning department. This item is now before you.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Malus 2 subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Next item.
Item number 24 is the final plat approval for Speedy Trail subdivision. This is a 20.30 acre tract of land out of Lot 28-5, West Edition to Sherland. It's currently owned R1T Townhouse Residential. The developer is Robert Galio and the engineer is Cruz Hogan Engineers. This is located at the southeast corner of West Mile 2 Road and North Holland Avenue. The developer is proposing 107 single-family residential lots and one detention pond. There are seven proposed fire hydrants. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. They will be having city utilities. PNC and staff recommended approval. This item is now before you.
Okay.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Speedy Trail subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Next item.
Item number 25 is a final plat approval for Bryan Point subdivision Phase 2. This is a 3.72 acre net tract of land, more or less, out of Lot 18-11, West Edition to Sherland. This is a Zone R2 duplex, fourplex. The developer is Lack Enterprises LLC and the engineer is Rio Delta Engineering. The subject site is located 655 feet east from the intersection of East First Street and Bryan Road along the south side of East First Street. The developer is proposing 10 duplex, fourplex residential lots. They will be complying with city utilities. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff recommended approval, subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees and provide water district exclusion. This item is now before you.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Bryan Point subdivision Phase 2. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, City Manager. Authorization to allow to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the Educational Resource Officer Program between the City of Mission and the Sherland Independent School District for the 2023-2024 school year. A total of six officers would be assigned to the Educational Resource Officer Program at Sherland ISD. The agreement will be in effect from August 21st, 2023, through May 30th, 2024. A total of 179 days. The total amount of the interlocal agreement is $405,094.92. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the MOU with the Sherland Independent School District. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
The next item is authorization to re-enter into memorandum of understanding for the Educational Resource Officer Program between the City of Mission and the Mission Consolidated Independent School District for the year of 2023-2024 school year. A total of 15 Mission Police Officers will be assigned to the Educational Resource Officer Program. The agreement will be in effect from August 7th, 2023, through May 28th, 2024. A total of 174 days. The total amount of the interlocal agreement is $991,783.35. Staff and city manager recommend approval as well.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second to approve the MOU with, between the City of Mission and Mission CISD. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item, chief.
Last item is authorization to purchase three Sky Cop mobile surveillance trailers through a sole source vendor. The three Sky Cop mobile surveillance trailers will be purchased through Sky Cop Inc. The three Sky Cop mobile surveillance trailers will be utilized to deter all burglaries of vehicles, auto thefts, any other common crimes, and to monitor heavily populated commercial and residential areas. The total expenditure will be $176,235. Funds will be from Stone Garden operation fiscal year 2022, which is always a year behind. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the three Sky Cop, Sky Cop mobile surveillance trailers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. Next item. Mr. Terrazas.
Good afternoon, City Council. I come before you to present item 29. Approval Amendment Number 1 to the Advanced Funding Agreement for Inspiration Road Military Parkway Loop Whining Project. As a result of recent updates approved with the Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, additional category 7 funds were awarded to this project. Category 7 funds for utilities are increased by $500,000 from $800,000 to $1.2 million. The $500,000 increase category funds resulted in an increase of $26,650 from $1.4 million to $1,428,928 in direct state costs which are being paid by the state. The total estimated contract budget increased by $526,650 from $28,896,900 to $28,616,259. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I'm going to approve based on the recommendation under staff and the city manager, Randy Perez.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve amendment number 1 for the advanced funding agreement for Inspiration Road and Military Parkway Loop. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 30. Approval Amendment Number 2 to the Advanced Funding Agreement for Taylor Road, Mile 2 North Project to Business 83 project. As a result of recent updates approved with the Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, additional category 7 funds were awarded for this project. The total estimated cost for the construction of category 7 funds is an increase by $5 million from $7.6 million to $12.6 million and to change the responsibility for the construction direct state cost to the local government. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve amendment number 2 for the advanced funding agreement for Taylor Road. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Mayor, can I just ask a question regarding these funds?
Yes. Yes.
So, these category seven funds, does that, is that money that the city would have had to have paid? Or what is that? I mean...
No, these category seven funds are funded through the Rio Grande Metropolitan Planning Organization. We were awarded twelve point six million dollars for the Taylor Road Phase Two project. So, the AFA stated that we only paid two percent. So, in essence, we get reimbursed ninety-eight percent of the construction.
And so, these five million, that was already accounted for, or what? I mean, it's because I'm confused about the additional money.
Yeah, so it's the additional funding that the city received with conjunction with McCandlin.
So, in an effort with the Mayor and Mr. Perez, we fought at MPO for extra funding due to the increase on the construction cost.
Okay.
So, that's what is this money allocated?
So, that would have been the city paying for that, but because of your work, we were able to have the state pay for it and we only paid two percent?
Correct.
That's right.
So, yes.
There was a shortage in funds and, you know, we made those adjustments based on the presentations and then so the MPO agreed to award additional five million dollars.
Okay. And because of the rising construction costs, so, yes. Okay, thank you. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number thirty-one. Authorize Mayor to execute a fifth amendment to reimbursement agreement between Mission Redevelopment Authority, reimbursement zone number one, and the City of Mission related to the Benson Palm Development Lift Station Project Phase Three. The fifth amendment is necessary to incorporate additional cost of thirty-three thousand, seventeen dollars with fifty cents associated with the decommissioning of two lift stations located in Meadow Creek and to turn to the facility of the Benson Palm Phase Three project. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the Mayor to execute the fifth amendment to reimbursement agreement between the parties involved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Mr. Terrazas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number thirty-two. Authorization to award bid for two Wanko video message boards. The City of Mission has accepted an open one-bid response for video message boards. Recommendation to award bid to Fast Science who is the sole responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. These message boards will be used to provide the residents of the City of Mission with various information such as updates on CDC guidelines, COVID-19 vaccination sites, and it will also be utilized to provide important information in the event of severe weather, disasters, hurricanes, et cetera, such as shelter and information, evacuation routes. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the bid for Wanko video message boards. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five, zero.
Thank you.
And next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. KM International proposes to provide public relations and communications consulting services and media relations consulting services to the City of Mission for the purposes of promoting and marketing city news activities and accomplishments within and among the Mission community and the broader community at large, as well as developing and implementing strategies for effective relations with media outlets to maintain optimal media coverage for an ongoing basis at a monthly rate of six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for a period of twelve months.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the contract with KM International. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five, zero. Next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I bring before you item number thirty-four. Authorization to purchase diesel pump accessories from Xylem via Byboard for water distribution. The purchase of the Drive Prime SD one fifty M diesel pump and accessories from Xylem via Byboard, contract HGAC CM zero-two dash twenty-one, to be used for emergency bypassing power outages for lift stations throughout the City of Mission utilizing ARPA funds in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of the diesel pump and accessories. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five, zero. Next item. Ms. Galio.
Yes, Mayor, Council, good evening. This is consideration to modify the 2023 City of Mission Christmas holiday schedule. Currently, the offices are scheduled to be closed on Friday, December twenty-second, and Monday, December twenty-fifth for the Christmas holiday. Consideration is being requested to modify the holiday schedule for 2023 as follows. City office to be closed on Monday, December twenty-fifth, and Tuesday, December twenty-sixth. City offices will be open on Friday, December twenty-second. We're seeking council consideration for this item.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to modify the 2023 City of Mission Christmas holiday schedule as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five, zero.
We're going to close December nineteenth, my birthday.
Next item. Ms. Vela.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number thirty-six is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have two. One in the 2018 Certificate of Obligation Fund and in the 2021 Certificate of Obligation Fund. In the 2018 fund, we have one million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars in expenditures for the allocation of funding for projects from the 2018 bond to include the City Hall Roof Lions Park Project and other facility improvements. In the 2021 CO, we have sixteen million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars in expenditures for the allocation of funding for projects from the 2021 bond to include drainage projects and the Lions Park Project. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five, zero.
Thank you.
The next item.
Good afternoon. Item number thirty-seven. Authorization to purchase GS systems from Cubic Public Works Department. The authorization to purchase GS systems for cameras and accessories from the Cubic. Cameras will be installed on four ninety-five and Stewart, as well as four ninety-five and Grasscock Intersections to aid in with detection of traffic. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of the GS system from Cubic for Public Works. All in favor say aye.
Mayor, I have a question. How much?
Yeah, I'll add that question.
What's that dollar amount?
The dollar amount, it was four... Second. Thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
How much?
Thirty-four thousand was seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
I thought it was forty.
Okay. The motion is for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five, zero. Thank you. Next item.
Item number thirty-eight is the authorization to award bid for sludge management services for the Public Works Department. The bids accepted and opened, the City of Mission accepted and opened two bid responses from sludge management services for the Public Works Department wastewater treatment plant, pre-treatment plant, and the northwater plant and southwater plants. The staff recommends awarding bid to CNC Waste Management DBA CB Three Hauling, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Recommendations based solely on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on an as intended basis. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve to CB Three Hauling, who is the lowest responsible bidder.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to award the bid as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five, zero. Thank you. Next item is unfinished business, and we do have an item on the table.
Bless you.
Is there a motion to remove from the table?
I still move, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second to remove the rezoning request from the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number thirty-nine is a rezoning for a tract containing point thirty-six acres of land to carry out of the south, one half of block fifteen dash eight, the west addition to Sherland. Porciones fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven, and further being out of lot sixty-one of the unrecorded Nobocarter subdivision. It's currently zone R one, single-family residential. The request is to rezone to R two duplex fourplex. The applicant is Martin Vega. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Nobocarter and Mayberry Road. Surrounding zones include industrial to the north and east and single-family residential to the west and south. Existing land use includes single-family residential to the west and south. To the northeast vacant and to the east, there's an existing warehouse. This subdivision has been considered for several rezonings in the past ranging from commercial, industrial, and residential. It is staff understanding from the surrounding residents and the City Council that they would like to keep this area as residential with the exemption of the lots off of Conway, which are already zoned commercial. Staff notes that the proposed zone does not comply with city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. PNC and staff recommended denial. This item is now before you.
Alrighty, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition?
Victor. Victor, is it a public?
Oh, that's right, no, this is not a public...
Yeah, we already had the public hearing before.
That's right, I'm sorry. Alright, okay. My mistake. Okay. Alright, are there any questions or discussion?
I think last time we were here, I had mentioned the fact that, you know, right across the street there is industrial and the transition from industrial to R two?
Duplex fourplex.
Duplex fourplex is not something crazy, right? I mean, it's not... Because we have residential right now. If you cross the street from the industrial area there, it's all residential. So, R two would be higher density. It would be more consistent with the transition from industrial to residential, right? Or am I wrong? Correct me if I'm wrong.
It would be industrial, commercial, multifamily, duplex fourplex, townhomes, and residential.
Okay, so then, it would be even, I guess, the R two would be a higher density, right?
Yes.
As opposed to R one?
Yes, it would be a higher density. It would be considered a higher density than the current zonings in the area.
And is the railroad track being used right now? That spur? Sorry.
I know there is some area that is... There's no public, at this time, there's no public comment. This is just for the council and staff to discuss.
I know the railroad off of Conway is used.
Okay. And you said there's no current apartments around the area at all?
Mayor, I have a question. I have a couple of questions, can I ask? Ms. Suzy, so you see where the red line is? It's going above like a house that's there. So, are they going to tear down that house? Or that house is going to stay?
No, they would have to, actually, they would have to remove everything. If that is the parents, they would need to remove.
Are you removing the home? No. Okay, so, I passed by there the last weekend. I personally wouldn't mind for the apartments to be there. I think that the area calls for something like that. I don't know how you all feel. I think that they already presented their point. It's a family location. I know they live around that area too, so they're going to be able to see who applies and who lives there, and they're going to keep an eye on all that. I think it would be different if somebody just came and bought there and was going to just rent it out to anybody. But I think because the family is going to continue to live around that area, they're going to be picky with who's going to rent there and can maintain it. But I don't know. That's just my opinion. I don't know how you all feel, because I know this has been tabled once before.
Yes. Okay, so now, this presents a question. So, the red line is a lot line?
It shows the property line. So, if we show it as that area is being vacant, if that property encumbers that, they would actually need to demolish in order to be able to construct on that property.
Yeah, because...
It needs to be completely vacant, and that would be an encroachment. Maybe at one time, they used to own both tracks, and that's why that home, part of the home is shown on the aerial, because that is the case in most of the properties, they own more than...
Right. Yeah, that's an issue, a major concern actually, because that property line goes right through that building. So, you wouldn't be able to construct there. There would be all kinds of...
Unless they would demolish.
Unless it was demolished, yeah.
So, have you had that conversation with the applicants?
No, I have not met, never met with the applicants.
And so, prior to building anything there, they'd have to come get a permit?
Yes.
Somebody would go inspect to make sure that there's nothing there or that it was demolished?
They would need to show us a layout as to what they're proposing. We would go inspect and make sure that there's, that the land is vacant in order for them to be able to construct.
And that would go for even if they were going to build a single-family home? I mean, that, actually, that has to be done before anything. Is that correct?
That is correct, and also, the history of the property. Since it's an unrecorded plat, another thing would be to check the history on the property because it might require a single lot variance. That is another...
Subdivision thing?
Yes.
Okay. In my opinion, we're not ready to zone this because there's other issues.
Yeah, can we motion to continue to table it? And you go and meet with the applicant and let them know all the different things? We can do that? Yeah.
There's a motion to table?
Second.
And a second? Because of the situation and there are concerns that have risen. So, all in favor to table the item? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five, zero. Next item is the routine matters. City Manager comments?
Yes, ma'am. Do have a couple of comments. On Thursday, we will be participating in the Rio Grande Valley Economic Summit. That's on Thursday, August the seventeenth, from ten to twelve at the Burdoggan Arena. Also, Saturday, August nineteenth, we are partnering up with the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society for a low-cost community clinic. That's from ten AM to one PM. That's to twenty-seven Aberdeen of Faria Street. We are advertising information regarding that clinic as well. And also, to announce that our national night out is August the twenty-second, from six to ten PM at the Mission Event Center. Also, we are coordinating with Rio Grande Regional, the standalone ER here on four ninety-five and Conway. They are scheduled to open this Friday, and so we are scheduling with them. Hopefully, we can schedule a ribbon cutting with them. They are, we're expecting a contact from them, so that's on this Friday. I'll send out the information once it's confirmed. And also, the Buenestar's luncheon, which is scheduled for this Wednesday at the Mission Event Center, and it's related to the education component that Ms. Brenda mentioned. That's all I have.
Okay.
So, summer is over. Most of us are back at work and school started today, so let's just all be aware of our surroundings and wake up a little bit earlier to get out earlier. I know traffic is very chaotic, and just be safe and have a fabulous, fabulous school year. Thank you.
Okay.
No comments, Mayor?
No comments.
Okay, I just want to wish everybody a really good school, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I hope that everybody has successes that they are planning on, and just wish everybody the best of luck. And Chief, you're in charge. So... Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Alright, because I usually want to finish it before it's over.
I'm going to adjourn.
Adjourn, second.
Okay, motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.